Okay, well, welcome everybody here to our November twenty-fifth regular meeting, Grovetown Town Council. And this evening, we've got Town Clerk Joanne Perry, Town Manager Sandy Collins, Councillor Jess Paul. Councillor Perry is not here this evening. Councillor Chantel Lynch, Councillor Richard Kelly, Councillor Craig Arnold, Deputy Mayor Dave Saunders and myself, Tom Churchill. I'll call the order. And we'll start with the regular council meeting of October twenty-eighth at seven thirty P M. Need a motion to adopt, please. Deputy Mayor and second by Councillor Kelly. All in favor? Everybody. Anything arising from October twenty? Recommendations here, do you need a simple motion to adopt? In number five. Now, this came from a public works committee meeting, so we we introduced them there and voted on.
Okay.
Is there anything else arising? Okay, well, hearing none?
Number eleven.
Okay.
Eleven, we ever get contact with Wolf James regarding that compensation? If we had a meeting written or if we had a meeting written, we passed it.
Yeah. This is, this is in the amount.
I understand we're the probably worst in the people. I don't know if you see if you do.
That's all in the amount.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the privilege meeting then on October twenty-eighth, the date twenty? This was a an H R issue, so we just have a motion to adopt the minutes, please. Move by Councillor Second. And second by Councillor Paul. Councillor Arnold, Councillor Paul. All in favor? Does, we can have a discussion later on, or you want to leave this to a H R committee?
Okay, right. Privilege meeting.
A privilege meeting, but do we want, or do we want to leave it to an H R committee to come back with a recommendation?
I was going to suggest a privilege meeting after tonight's council meeting to discuss another issue.
Okay.
So we could do both at the same time, perhaps.
Okay, now then, the next item is a permit committee meeting of November the third at one P M. Motion to adopt, please. I'm a, I guess, Councillor, Deputy Mayor and Councillor Arnold, all in favor? Everybody. And this is a permit committee meeting dealing with the response to a request for a nuisance dog on one of our, and one of our community, or one of our streets in the community. And the recommendation was the permit committee would leave to discuss with these people and choose in November the tenth. The next meeting then, of course, is on November the tenth, is the results of that meeting. So need a motion to adopt, please. Move, Councillor Kelly, second, Councillor Arnold, all in favor? Everybody. And that one, of course, the meeting was held to discuss a request by a John New residence. Perhaps the meeting was to discuss the issue of the dog barking dog. The committee recommends that the town manager write a letter to the property owner, explain that the dog's behavior, that the dog can buy extension to property owner is in contravention of the town's nuisance regulations. If the problem isn't satisfactorily resolved in the time and manner, the town manager will engage animal control officers from a neighboring community to intervene on the town's behalf. So that was the recommendation. And I guess in order for us to follow that, and of course, we need a motion. Move by Councillor Paul. We have a second, Councillor Arnold. Any further discussion of that? Hearing none? All in favor? It's everybody. So that, that will be a letter that will be written, I guess, and an explanation that we made. The next item is the council meeting of November the, November the seventeenth at one P M. And needed motion to adopt, please. Councillor Kelly, second Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Everybody. There's a number of items there that hasn't been recorded in the meeting before, so I'm mentioning those now as we go. The first one is a move by Councillor Arnold, second by Deputy Mayor Saunders, to council accept government funding for the purpose of the R F E, request for proposals in the development of proposed market, community market. And that was carried, six in favor.
Was there one in, in, right here?
No, that was just, that was, that was always here at the time.
Oh, okay.
Something was missing.
Okay.
I can't think of who it is right now. Oh, Councillor Lynch wasn't here if he was working at that. The next item is the library house, the library, yeah, I guess, library house, the exchange of books. There was a consensus that an decision on the placement of the library house donated by Doris Ford be revisited in the spring when COVID is hopefully not such a concern. And I believe there's a letter tonight that we need to address as well in relation to that. Number three, the awarding of the tender for the old Dodge pickup was moved by Councillor Kelly, second by Councillor Perry, that council accept the bid on the town's two thousand and thirteen Dodge pickup in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars from Feltham's Construction. And that was carried as well, six in favor. And the last item on that one is in relation to the Christmas dinner for staff. The move and council, move by Councillor Paul and second by Councillor Perry, that based on restrictions related to COVID nineteen, the council's Christmas dinner, scheduled for seventeenth of December, include town staff only, no spouses or guests. And that was approved as well. And that was at a full council meeting, of course. Next item is a public works meeting of November seventeenth at one twenty. And this was a meeting held to discuss a request by Wolf James for the installation of a dumping station at his place of business, Main Street. So, and the recommendation that came from there was subject to any necessary government approvals. Council will allow Mr. James to run a line with nearest list station. Not allowed to be tied indirectly to the main line. Once Mr. James opens his dumping station, the town would dis, e-commission theirs. And a charge might be made to Mr. James' traditional water and sewer services. And that was a recommendation from the Public Works Committee, and of course, it needs to be adopted by council. We need a motion.
Question first?
Move, we can have the questions afterwards. Move by Councillor Kelly, second by Councillor Paul. Over. Any discussion? Can I ask you out a question?
Yeah, is that the typical thing for a town to do to, to this sort of water and sewer charge for something like that, or is that a first for the town?
It's the first time we've ever had anything like this happen in town. So I think we're just looking at the possibility that there might be something there that we need to be.
Well, we're, we're, we're chance there, we won't disconnect their home. So, and we're, you know, there's no charge on that, so why are we just going to, you know, we're, it's good that he's doing it. And now we're turning around, going to charge him for a bit of water and sewers, so I don't think it's.
I don't know, I mean, it depends on what a, what a town, I guess, at the time sees.
Or sewer and G system.
Yeah. Depends on whether they might be.
Not for, for that today, or.
I mean, is that, that's, we try to answer down, so there's only somebody company, first one, it's not a big deal, right?
When anybody got to, like, like four P M, that town, we had to carry four P Ms for the second one up through this place. In the garage. He had, had his garage, he was only used it on a very short period of time, because he did it on the road. But he still had to pay the water and sewer.
And, and this is a case, probably should mention, well, this is a case of a fee being charged by the business owner to the people who are dumping, so it might be where our world charge a little because.
What kind of fee would be happening?
I don't know. We'd have, this is something we'd have to determine because we're, you know, it doesn't say that, you know, we're not sure what the fee would be, it doesn't say what it would be.
Okay, so then, what it works to me would make a recommendation, what the fee would be, and what the council for what?
That's the word.
Yes, that's.
Well, it does look like it would be a water and sewer fee. But if our water and sewer.
An extra one.
Yes.
Okay.
And we carry an extra water and sewer fee somewhere now, is what I'm asking. Because you can't, you know, if it is, it got to be the same, can't be.
Well, we don't get the example of the water and sewer, the water and sewer fee. It was up to four P M. I know, before we wrote letters there and everything, and we said, no, you have to reopen up to it, you're opening to the water and sewer.
Yeah.
We will have to. Council charges water and sewer fees to different types of businesses. Council also changes water and sewer fees to vacant land.
Yes, yes.
So I suspect when all the government service approvals come through, then we could probably make contact with other communities if you wish, to see what they charge, or we could look at charging the standard rate that we charge for, for businesses and, and residences. That's something we can look at if and when all these things are met. Because it's quite a bit of work, I would suspect, involved in him getting the approvals to, to do that down, down there. So before all that happens, I'm sure that'll come, come into the conversation, I would suspect.
But he didn't go to government services, that?
Oh, it's got to be unapproved.
And for the environment, I would suspect, and a number of different agencies.
So, recommendation has been, a motion had been made for a recommendation. And second, any further discussion? All in favor of it? It's everybody. Now, I failed to add the motion, or the minutes adopted at the beginning, so. Minutes, motion to adopt those minutes first, please, Councillor Arnold and secondly, Councillor Kelly. All in favor? It's everybody. Sorry about that. The next item is a public works meeting on November twenty-fifth at one P M. And the issue, that was today, of course. The issue was Harold and Cindy Hawkins at Four Clearview Avenue have requested to install a culvert under their driveway as it currently lacks proper drainage and as such, is much lower than the roadway. Again, a recommendation of the Public Works Committee provide the Hawkins with a twelve-inch culvert. The upgrade of the driveway and the installation of the culvert will be at their expense. Furthermore, the committee recommends removal of an overgrown driveway and removal of what appears to be a tanning sewer pipe contained within, located at the neighboring property on Two Clearview Avenue. Public Works will replace the side of the property's owner's side of the fence prior to the work commencing. The town manager will make the property owners of Clear, Two Clearview aware of the planned work. We need a motion to accept the minutes first, please. Councillor Arnold, second by Councillor Paul, all in favor? Everybody. The recommendation was made by the Public Works Commission. We need a motion to accept that recommendation. Move, move by Councillor Kelly, second by Councillor Arnold. Any discussion? So the Public Works were there today and visited that, of course, and that's the recommendation. Need a question, all in favor? Everybody. Okay. And that brings us to the end of our minutes. And the business arising, so we're down to deferred business. Do you municipal plan amendments for St. Cole's Sweet Apple Terrace, is there anything new? None, so leave it there. A letter from the old timers, Reedie Arena, naming. We're going to do an assessment of that, or what, what's, what's the plan? We've had it there for a long time now. We said we're looking at it to fall, and the fall will soon be here, and now it's November. Next week will be December.
The group is gathered together again now at the arena.
Right. Now, does council want to proceed?
Yeah, we want to.
Do we want to have a discussion of that sometime, or do you want to talk to them and want to see what they had in mind, or?
Probably see what they got in mind and bring back the conference.
I don't want to.
No.
It's a name building. Letter was really clear.
Where did your name go?
In memory of St. Saunders.
Yeah, that was the request.
That was the request.
Yeah, right. Do you want to have a discussion around it sometime, or do you want to? I, I, my only concern is, are we going, and all of this is, of course, are we going to start process of naming buildings and so on? We've, we haven't done a lot of it before, but we have done some.
But we had the building named on the school, that school down there. Personally, I like to see it stayed up. I still think we should do something to honor Sam with that building, like a pyramid site, like put it in the lobby. To honor him, explain why he don't for the reason. Because you got to look at it, a lot of people don't offer that arena. You got to pour it down, that's put a lot of money into it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
They had, they had, uh, college room, little hope.
Yeah.
So we have to be very careful when we're doing something like that.
If I may, uh, Councillor Kelly, you had a good idea, leave the, leave the arena like it is and put a plaque inside, uh, recognize Sam's efforts to get the, the building going? Is that worded correctly, or?
Well, we can make the wording, but the other question, yes, but it is to recognize Sam for his efforts to get the building.
You know.
The other question then, of course, that Councillor Kelly raised, is one of the other people, so. At the other groups and people who did spend a lot of time and money and so on.
I thought the next to the money could be named that thing.
Well, it is.
Yeah, the lion's club, I bet.
The lion's club themselves did that. Yes.
The, the town, I, I know the province a number of years ago came up with a policy on naming public buildings. Maybe the town should create a policy, because it's not going to be the first time this ever comes forward. So you want to treat everyone fairly, so whether that's the name this or not, but I think if you have a policy, then anytime this comes up, we can refer to the policy letter.
Yeah, okay. So will we defer it? And now let's, let's have a discussion.
Ready?
Pardon?
Are you going to make ready?
Okay, what would, what would you recommend?
I want to say anything to the province, kind of, guideline or something, more when I have to adopt that.
Yeah, do we have a committee in place, or do you want to, you want to pick, pick up another one, or?
Well, you could have a committee, I suggest, just for this purpose only.
For this purpose, yeah. Would like to sit on that committee?
I would.
Okay, Councillor Lynch and Councillor Kelly, one more, Councillor Arnold, okay. So that's three, but probably be enough, and I would make same from time to time.
So to, to deal with.
To deal with the issue of the.
And to do, look at some policy.
And policy and so on, yeah. Deal with the request and the policy that we would come up with. Someone want to make that a motion? Chantel, you made the, Councillor Lynch will make that a motion, second by Councillor Arnold, all in favor? Everybody. Okay, good. Second, the next item, brother, is the time of the zone change request from Tower Requested. There's nothing new on that, it's been.
That's in the works, so, yes.
In the works, okay. Did the dump, the dumping station spring of twenty twenty-one, that needs to stay there, of course, because we had, we're waiting now to find out what Mr. James is going to do, and of course, we had a petition to try to open the other one up there, so we'll see how that works out. House of Diamonds cleaning and the checking with our janitor care? Or anywhere, we're still not there because they have an open day, haven't they?
No, that, um, time is rather tight with our janitor. So if the council did want to proceed with something, we'd have to try to figure out an additional person or something that wouldn't, not as easy as just downloading an anchor or staff.
No, no. So we have to hire probably somebody else.
Likely, yeah.
How does council feel about that? Should we, we did get some funding for restart money, I think. And is there anybody interested in promoting that, pardon? Part of that in New Canada?
To do the work, Councillor Kelly said. I think she wanted to do the work.
Yeah.
But would they have to go through the union, that kind of thing?
Yeah, probably.
You.
We do have a casual calling person that potentially do that work.
If interest.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, we do have her as a casual caller.
I do, that's who we should check out.
Yeah. So let's see if, if she's able, willing to do the work, and if she is, then we need a motion from council, of course, to accept, to accept the cost, because there will be extra cost involved.
And, and a consideration, I think, in this is, once we begin this process, it will likely continue into the year after, so just be prepared with this. I don't, I don't think it's a short-term decision, so just be prepared that it may be something that is carried on from this point forward if you decide to go that way.
So that we're done after the function, so?
I guess that is serious, whatever the COVID, we got regulations with fee, right?
For sure.
So was that a motion? Need a motion?
I know.
Councillor, go ahead.
I've had Christine, if she's willing to do it, and put in the funds to.
Get, get the cleaning done when, when, when required.
Yeah. Thank you, Christine, but I don't want nobody else.
First, I'd like to clarify first for our current person, just to make sure.
Okay, I thought that was.
Yeah.
And we'll look at setting like a maximum, that's unfortunate. I guess we should, I guess, I guess at the time when we know what their intentions are, we'll have to come back to the table, I would suspect, if you're going to say, we'll provide someone to clean two hours a week or twenty hours a week, I mean, we're going to see what's.
Yeah, that'd be.
So we'll get, we'll, that's almost acceptable, agreeable to it, but it might have to be more of a.
Yes. But there's some discussion, or?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion was seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion? All in favor? Everybody. Okay, the, the next item is the review of policies for subdivision extensions to existing road water and sewer. Of course, we haven't done anything with that, that would be something that didn't need to be done, we've talked about it a number of times. Do we want to do that pre-Christmas or post-Christmas?
We still have that before Christmas, now everybody busy.
Pre-Christmas.
So would you leave that to Public Works to measure the, the, the council?
Yeah, I don't.
Hold on.
I mean, the question is whether we would do it, whether we would ask the committee to meet before or after Christmas, I guess. So I think the, the relate, the feeling is, leave it till New Year? Okay, we'll leave it on deferred business and for.
Yes, even for New Year.
Okay, next item is permits and crown land applications, and they're in on the whole thing. So we're down to reports, and the first one, of course, is the town manning day.
Okay, so most of you have known the, the work has begun on our road work. The paving, of course, we started next spring, summer, but we did culvert and ditching. Today, they pretty well suited up that work, so the next couple of days, we'll receive a substantial inspection report. Then we'll go over with the contractor and, and our engineer. Everything's covered really well, there's a few little issues that have come up, of course, when you're ditching and culverting in people's front yards, there's always a couple of issues contained with, but everything's been handled very well with the, by the engineer and contractors, quickly and professionally, and I think everything that has arisen has been dealt with, since that really, and everybody seems to be happy, so happy to report that, and.
Yes, except the, the patching, the paving patching, they're not going to be done this year now?
No, no, it's a separate contract that'll go next.
No, what you got, what you wrote down here?
Oh, that, that's.
That'll be. That'll be taped this year?
Yeah, before we get the full. It'll be done before Friday.
Then we done.
Yeah, that'll, that'll, that'll be part of the substantial inspection report.
Okay, yeah.
So any deficiencies that are identified would be, would be discussed during that time, so. Before they get paid, the work has to be done, so. Um, so that was just an FYI. With regards to the Diamond House, work is underway on the renovations on the outside and inside. Uh, it came up during a conversation with Kevin Blackmore, who is part of the Diamond House, of course, the committee down there. He said during the winter, he finds himself doing a lot of the snow clearing on the back bridge and whatnot. Our boys will go in, our public works will go in and clear it, park lot and such, but, you know, in around the doors always needs to be cleared. So Kevin, a lot of times takes it on himself, and he suggested that he has a second snow blower he can keep on site to make that task a little bit easier, whether it's him or another volunteer doing it. Part of that, though, was a request to construct a small storage shed for a snow blower near the back ramp, so the size was suggested at the time was six by six and five feet high, so basically just a storage for the snow blower, just to keep it out of the weather. So I spoke to the contractor who's on site there now, and he came up with a price of nineteen hundred dollars, which includes match inside, and of course, because it's a new plank lap board, it'd be shingled, a proper door put in, and all that stuff, and painted to match, so that was the price. So I'm bringing this to council's intention and consideration, I guess, whether you want to entertain that, or? What's your feelings?
Be nice to have them there, of course, because they need something, you know, which when they're doing it themselves, not like you're sending down our own employees to do it, and so on.
But couldn't our employees do it a lot cheaper?
We don't have anyone now to do that, our summer staff could, could do it next year, perhaps, Dave and Dean, but there's nobody.
But couldn't they come back for a few days, you know?
Let's see, it'd be more expensive to do that over time than it would to build a shed. We're just talking now about building a shed so they can do it themselves, they can look after it.
Well, the, the problem is, is that if we don't have a volunteer to do it, then the same going to pay someone.
Yeah.
We don't have to pay money regardless.
Yeah, it's going to cost us if, if that's the case, yeah, but like I say, right now, which you know, of course, they're prepared to do it themselves.
I know that we get contractors to build the shed.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Keep in mind now, of course, this is our property. Anything we build down there, of course, is part of our property. So at the end of the day, we'll, we'll help the shed as well. Any further discussion? Ready for a question, all in favor? Okay, it's everybody. Okay, sir.
Okay, I was speaking to the fire chief today, the fire department met last night, and their meeting, they discussed the Santa Claus parade, and they decided that on the nineteenth is when they're planning on doing it, but it's going to be very different this year, it's going to be a reverse parade, if you will, so it'll be the fire truck, they're thinking they'll have it at the school grounds. I think the assistant chief was clearing with the school to make sure that was fine, I, I think at this point it is. So they would have the fire, the fire truck parked up there with Santa Claus and some, and some costume characters and whatnot, and a food bank would be stationed there, and the people would visit. So they'd trot around the school, and there'd be a steady flow of traffic, nobody stopping, nobody congregating. They would get their bag of treats from Santa, if you will, and you could drop off your food, donation to the Salvation Army, and continue on. It would go on from ten to twelve, and there'd be no floats, it would only be the fire department, and there wouldn't be any pictures, and as I said, no stopping and gathering, those types of things, so that was the only thing they felt comfortable with, which I think is pretty good in these times.
So that's, that's something that we would approve or disapprove of.
No, more of that's, I guess.
Just for our information.
Yeah.
Okay, ready, comfortable with that again?
Uh, next, I was wondering if council, I've spoken to some councillors, and I think there's some interest here with regards to doing a shop locally initiative for Christmas with our local business community. Uh, maybe starting in December, doing something to encourage people to patronize local businesses and offer, you know, maybe a hundred dollar gift card to a local registered business of your choice to the winner, I don't know if we could do that, every person is made of twenty dollars or more, get your name into a draw. Encourage maybe a little bit of local shopping, and just a little nice thing to do, trying to darken more local businesses' doors in December, I don't know what the appetite is for that, or ideas, I'm open to them.
A good idea, would they?
Do I need to add something?
No, no, there's nothing, nothing in this view. The only thing you might be interested in is, we might be interested in what kind of a faucet we create for you at the counter.
Yeah.
No? If you had to put a name in a drawer or whatever. Okay, that's, that was one of the concerns I had, is that, you know, would this create a problem at cat ears?
Well, you had to put it in every business.
Every business would collect, I guess.
That, that was just an idea off the top of my head, we could do something where you take pictures of your kids in Santa Claus costumes, and you get entered into the thing, like, whatever, I, I'm not hung up on the whole, you know, dropping the, the name in the store, but I'm just thinking, it may be a way. I, I don't know, there's a bunch of different ways we can do this, so again, I'm open to suggestions.
Or just people shopping locally, let's see, it would be a good thing, I don't see why. You know, we've just tried it this year and seen, it's going to cost us a hundred dollars, but that'll be, I don't know. We spent, we spent a hundred dollars worth of net before.
So you're saying, like, maybe come up with something on a prize, and as somebody.
On the dollar.
Or.
Form. Gift card, yeah.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Or you could have, anytime someone goes to a local business, take picture and take shop local overhead.
There you go.
And then.
Then there's no, no issue with the staff, it's not a diss.
It don't matter who's doing it.
Who's going to take pictures?
The landlord, anybody who went there.
Individuals.
Their own.
Good shit, the only way.
Well, that's the point, that's the point, the, the advertising, and everybody said, oh, these are the trucks going out, take picture, and then then drugstore, and then, you know, it's just, it's constant, constant, constant.
So they submit the picture where?
I'm pleased with it on Instagram or whatever, just if you put hashtag, they shop local overhead. When you go search for, all the people that page that, it'll show.
And we take one of those pictures.
Yeah.
As the winner.
That's what we did with the garbage cleanup.
That's what we did with the garbage cleanup, something similar to that, right? That was fun, so, yeah.
Okay, so everybody feel about that?
That's easy.
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't be a problem of counting out or keeping track of all those.
I can't take that much of a thing.
Just intended Polaroids, if you will.
Make sure you put a little bit of skippa stuff on top. Uh, do we need a motion for that? Because the hundred dollars was supposed to go to spend, so we can't have to make a motion. Do we have a second there? Which part? Okay, uh, councillor Paul? Uh, all in favor? So, is everybody, so we'll try and do the photo.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Just residents of the door, are you carrying, do, um, got people from town who calls on the field this, or just residents of the door?
I, I was kind of thinking, anyone could be included, but it would have to be a hundred dollar gift card attached to a overtime registered.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, remote, more aggressive, give people from outside too, of course.
Yes, is interesting.
Okay, carry on, sir?
Okay, so there's a couple of items, just quickly, um, approval of the borrows, so the two programs, projects, sorry, that we have underway now, the road upgrading and paving, which I mentioned just a short time ago. As well as the water storage tank, which is in the planning stages, uh, we need a motion to draw upon that money we were approved from, uh, approved for, I'm sorry, so approval of the borrow. Um, that motion needs to be made, as I understand from the town clerk, that wasn't, wasn't called at this point?
Already they have drawn a month's, initial municipal payers, it's a second one. Makes approval of the borrow, the storage tank will borrow a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-one. Dollars, and the road upgrading is two hundred and fifty-four, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Fifteen-year amortization, a five-year time limit.
So, um, the storage thing, we definitely need to move the, so. Because some discussion here between the storage tank, to be each storage tank, you've been not deep in the storage tank, or what do you think, uh, uh, new line will have to be, they have a million dollars over there?
Well, that's still with the engineers, I met with them two days ago, the last meeting with regards to, so they've got their water modeling study done. I still haven't got the answer of which way they're going to go with that, but that wouldn't have any impact on this, this is just to, whether we go ahead with a million dollar project or a two million dollar project, we still need this done. But, uh, hopefully I have the answers for you soon, I'm just waiting on the EMG to get back to us.
Okay, councillor Kelly, uh, councillor Arnold made the motion, I think, to.
A second.
And councillor Paul, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Everybody, okay.
Okay, uh, next, this is something new, um, on the town's credit card, we have a, a limit of ten thousand dollars. Now they are, it's borrowing resolution from municipalities and school boards, it's centered by the credit card company that we need a motion, basically accepting that there's a ten thousand dollar limit, and of course, uh, that credit card has authorized spending out of by mayor, town clerk, manager, whatever the case is, so. It's just acknowledging that, it's something that's been in place for years, but it's the first time they've asked us to pass a motion as such.
So we need a motion. Councillor Lynch and councillor Arnold? Any discussion? All in favor? Everybody again.
And finally, the Freshmark building, which was purchased by the town, uh, taxes were paid up until the purchase date, of course, and from that point on now until the end of the year, I was looking to, um, have, I guess, exemption or whatever the case were not, as we are now the owners of the building. So we wouldn't expect the former owner to pay the remainder.
So we need a motion? Move councillor Kelly, councillor Arnold, any discussion? All in favor? Everybody. Okay. Is it served? Good. Uh, down to ground table then, councillor Paul?
Just one question that we made since afternoon here, where we found the road coming up to Little. Is it Little Drive?
Well, it's Little Drive.
And over a year, we've found that road near on, on our road, are we going to continue doing that, or are we just going to, and we, last time we discussed it, when we didn't.
This is never, well, I don't think there was any discussion around whether we should or not, but just the information came through that we were, some of us wondered why.
Yeah, uh, until, I guess, public works have given direction not to, it's been an accepted, I'll say, policy for the last number of years. I know last year we tried to do some things that didn't appear to make sense at face value, and we ended up having to reverse them because, because of standards that have been set over the years, so it, I think, I'm open to discussing it if, if council wishes.
I was just saying to the mayor today, to upgrade that road, I guess, to, to, to upgrade, to upgrade the road so that the town can take it over as a road? And put a turn around at the end there inside, the road is free, does that must do to upgrade a road, I think, I was hoping today.
But it's a driveway, essentially, or it's not a, not a road.
Well, it's, I should have looked at that, was that?
It's going to upgrade a road, as I said to you today, it's still going to have the proper class of feeling.
No, I realize that, I realize that.
It's just suggesting that, so, uh, public works want to think, come over and, and, and look at it and see.
My son, I was saying, we're getting tax loans to house, I mean, you know, and it's already fair that they stopped plowing the road and, and, you know, the other thing, the garbage would be.
We already issue that, that I know that was.
They're not a celebrity, you know.
Why is it?
No, I, I can hear from either, uh, property owner, if, if we were to go down that road, generally they would approach us and offer a very low level standard and then turn it over to the town, like, I don't know, the property that road sits on is probably held with understanding, so.
It was just off construction, I mean, that's what town decides to do is force that, I mean.
But then they'll look and see how long the road is and.
Yeah, well, yeah.
They might bring it up standard.
They may want to bring it up standard.
Yeah. Turn it on to town.
Right. But it's unusual that it didn't come from one, something like that.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, we'll leave it to the public works committee?
No, this is, we have that next meeting. Next meeting, we have to move on to the.
Okay, anything else, councillor Paul?
What's it?
Councillor Lynch?
Um, I want to know what is on general skating at the arena.
Um.
Or if somebody can tell me why there's no general skating.
Initially, when the arena opened, it was a lot, most arenas weren't having public skating because of the tar to take out of the unknown, you don't know if you're going to have five people, if you're going to have a hundred, whatever the case is. Now traditionally, we've had, from what I understand, three or four an evening, sometimes when we have crowded, it'd be nine or ten. Um, but the thing is, it, what we're having here now, whether it's TNT, ice skating, or if it's modern hockey, the organizing body is liable, and they're the ones enforcing the rules, if you will. So they're the ones taking names, doing contact tracing, making sure they're always keeping distances, making sure there's not too many people on the ice, that's not being done by our staff and by organizing bodies. So when we take on public skating, we would then be that, that organizing body and would have to take on that liability. Uh, some arenas have brought it in just recently, I think Clearable's one, they have a pre-registration, you have to go on, online prior to and register. The other issue is getting frowned upon accepting cash money, so payment would be an issue as well, because generally, traditionally, you go up there with your five dollars to hand over. We're not encouraging that type of transaction anymore, so we have to find a way to, to accept payment from someone, to register, to make sure the staff person's able to monitor property, do contact tracing, all of those things, so. For those reasons, pardon me?
So it can be done?
Oh, absolutely, it absolutely can be done, um, the only thing is that we found that a lot, we're, we seem to be getting more private ice rentals by organized groups, so. Say, for example, if Shanta Lynch Hockey wanted to go up there on Sunday evenings, rent the ice for an hour, they then would be the organizing body and would make sure all the rules are followed and contact tracing. Would collect the money prior to and just pass over a check to the town. It, it's just worked better, so if you want to do the public skating, I think we just need to wrap our heads around all the little ins and outs of it and be prepared to deal with it, so.
So is public knowledge, what ice time is available for public renting?
Uh, well, we've had people call, so we just encourage and speak to the, um, arena manager, and of course, he would have a schedule there and say, you know, between seven and eight on Saturday. For example, Saturdays have free ice time, so if someone wanted to organize, pay a hundred and ten dollars to go up there, collect the money themselves from each person, then pass over a check or make an electronic payment to the town, that would be very clean and simple. But, uh, I'm sorry that there hasn't been nothing else, so.
And usually they line up, there's a thirty-five, there's a thirty-five, the first thirty-five, or two, three, ten, I don't know.
I'm Nicole.
Guess we do it.
Well, something probably did, uh, you know, can be.
I know, I'm not, I'm asking you to think, boy, boy, you gotta be up there, I'm not allowed to have general skating.
And why is you a general?
Same person said to me, but you never walk there either.
I'm saying you want a general skating, you know, normally.
Like I said, three or four, we didn't get a lot passed, that's not to say we wouldn't get more this year, but.
Only because it's not set in the schedule for every week, you gotta wait till five hours before, and then it goes on Facebook and says, oh, no, today there are general skating, I'm sure. It's not, it's like, people came over from gamble to go to general skating, oh, no, no, there's someone else got it that day, and then they get turned around, so I wouldn't come back no more.
This is another problem, if that's how it's going to be, you wouldn't be able to pre-register, so that would be a bigger problem, of course, if it was like it's been in the past, right?
Well, I'm not saying you can look.
No, no, but, yeah.
But we don't need to be craves.
But it needs to be consistent in order to draw credit.
You go down by the steward, yeah, you get craves.
And you say consistent, then you get four or five people up there, then somebody comes in from gambling, wants to have a turn or something, they're in, they're not getting in. You know, you can't, you can't turn down three or four thousand dollars for.
No.
Kind of all over the year, so, yeah.
Forty fifty bucks, what?
It's about having the facility available to people.
You can have that facility, you're only going to get three or four people, so. Yeah, well, that's.
There would be more people if it was consistent.
I think we're out while, probably after Christmas, while I'm here.
Try it on.
See, yeah, one hour, see if we can arrange it and, and.
One hour a week, see what we get?
Yeah.
But if we're only going to four or five people up there, why is it?
Yeah.
Peaceful.
No, be interesting to see what come out. Anyway, if, I'm sure councillor Lynch will keep it in mind, and then probably after Christmas, we can try to set up something. Anything else, councillor Lynch?
No.
Councillor Kelly?
No.
Councillor Arnold?
No.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
Okay, and I don't have anything, so, that being the case, we'll move to correspondence. Your folder. The first item is a letter from Craig Pollack, who is the Chief Executive Officer from Innesville, who's Latin Labrador. And it's information, we got the safe restart agreement, and this is back in October twenty-eighth, and it's a letter attached that was sent to a minister of minute. And requesting information in terms of when the money will be available, all that, I think, here is. Uh, yep, town manager?
Mm-hmm.
So this is just some information that came through, but we don't know that, uh, we do get some funding under that program, I think, uh, was that mentioned last time?
It's a hundred and twenty-two thousand and change.
Right, so, let's just for information purposes. The next item is a letter related to the capital investment plan approval. And this is, uh, as you can see there on the page, would please be advised, the gas tax committee has accepted the project, the project listed on the town's capital investment plan as arena upgrade. This is, of course, was for the chiller and the gas detection, and that's for two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, so that's an approval by them, uh, that we can spend that gas tax money. Uh, but we need a motion to accept that recommendation or approval? Councillor Arnold? Ca- Deputy Mayor? Any discussion? For that money, when the time comes right, I guess that money will come from our gas tax funding.
So can I also, uh, ask council for a motion to go to tender, now that I have that approval?
Okay, well, let's, let's accept the funding first. So we have a motion that's made and seconded, anything else to be said?
In the event that, uh, comes in over that, the, according to estimates, right, or for tenders?
Mm-hmm.
So anything over that, what will happen then?
We send in, we send in a revised gas tax.
Request.
Request.
Yeah, we, we did that with school, road lift station.
Okay. Any further discussions? All in favor? Okay, so that's an acceptance of that funding for the, uh, gas next money, and, uh, town manager said we need a motion to, uh, consent over the tender? Move, by councillor Kelly, seconded by councillor Lynch, any discussion? So let's make sure that the work, do ensure, I guess, that the work is done next season or after Christmas?
So the gas detection would happen ASAP?
Okay.
As part of that, and then the general would be in the off season?
The off season, yeah. Okay, uh, any further comments? All in favor? Everybody, okay? The next item is a letter from Enlow, the list of business advisors, and uses mostly for information, but it is known it's this central region. Uh, they have a list of startup, startup business advisors and, uh, growth business advisors, and for our region, you'll see that it's Lindsay Mercer and Betsy Saunders. And Betsy, of course, is, uh, here in town and related to our deputy mayor, so that information is there, if anybody reads it, the phone numbers are there, if anybody wants to check with the town manager or town clerk, I'm sure they'll get that information. The next item is an email from Elders Feldham, and this is in relation to repair on Jollyview Drive Sewer seventy. And I think what, uh, we probably should do with this, because there's a, a lot of details here, there's a bill attached at the end. Uh, probably again, uh, defer this to, uh, public works. You know, have a look at that and just see what went on there, and, uh, if the bill is, is justified, sell it, so. We may have to do a little bit of, uh, conversation with the contractor, maybe with the, uh.
Did town, uh, that repairs was done by contractor?
Well, it's there from the contractor.
The contractor, this should be there.
Well, we, we let that out.
Can you work your system?
Yes, that's, no, I didn't know that, it was, uh, it was, uh, work that they did, and nothing to do with whether or not they did.
Yeah, but said, he says that the poster installed, in company installed.
Yeah.
Somebody in town was installed. So the town installed, it installed properly. Were you ever on the hook?
That's the thing, yeah. We'll have that discussion, okay? Uh, that's, uh, consensus, okay with that? Madam?
You have to throw me in for coffee.
Look at which three things coming up there, what's your preference, sir?
Uh, next Tuesday at, uh, one o'clock.
Okay.
Great, you'd be available.
Another lunch gone, great.
I thought you'd be bringing lunch for me.
Tuesday at, uh. Two o'clock?
Four one.
Two, one o'clock, sorry, I wrote down one, said two. Uh, okay, so that'll be public works. There's a couple of things.
Bring on us, yeah.
I will.
The next item, uh, there's kind of two we're together now, um, this is a letter from Tony Mulroney, and, uh, he's looking for a donation. Quite a, uh, lengthy letter there in terms of what's available or what's, uh, said. But right down towards the end, this is, I'm requesting and kindly asking that the town reinstate the one-hour shitty hockey sometime during the week as the one-hour public skating, so I guess he wants to.
That's two separate, so one is for a sponsorship and one is for, yes, talk about the reopening of public skating.
So the first one is about public skating, I guess?
Yeah.
So I don't know how we want to handle that, if we would look at that in terms of, uh, public skating one, or something we just talked about it? Whether it's, whether it's the town.
We've been touched on that throughout the Christmas. We're talking about the general skating.
Yeah, so we'll include this with the discussion. Okay, well, let's, let's leave that for now, because that's the next letter. Okay, I'll come back, I'll come back to you.
So we'll, we'll defer his first letter.
Sorry, first one, not that.
I don't know what's going to be discussed that in the new year.
In the new year with the public skating.
Yeah.
Okay, the second letter is a request for funding. Um, and this is, uh, three pages, you see, there's a sponsor sheet at the back, there's a letter from the Mulrunis, and the second part, the first part is from Central Impact Under Eighteen Hockey. Again, it's, uh, it says the foster player, Tyrell Mulroney, uh, they're asking for a donation, and then the second last paragraph says, individual, individual players' contributions, give me as high as seven thousand per season, in addition to personal travel and equipment. So any sponsorship activity would be extremely appreciated, so this is where they're asking, I think, for a, uh, sponsorship funding. So Mr. Councillor.
He's jubilating, he puts it up in business for sponsorship, but I've never seen public culture, it's a typical gift of jubilating, you know, that I coach, you want to win the rarest sponsorship. Don't we have a sponsor give me any money if you're leaving the house?
Yes.
But they are going to labor or, they're going to labor or, or they leave the house.
They're representing Newfoundland.
They're representing, then they have to represent.
Representing. That's what council has done over the years.
Well, we don't, well, we never, ever, like, sponsor the player.
No.
Like, business, uh, business sponsors, like, two hundred dollars, they're business, they're business, we, we, we.
So is that a consensus around the table, or is there a, a differing opinion? That's been our policy, so I guess we'll accept our policy as being that and, uh.
Just tell them if these kids are leaving, going, representing the player, and.
Inside.
Just bring a letter, just tell them.
That is not what's up.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay, is that, okay with everybody, everybody, uh, accept that as a consensus? Okay?
Good.
Next item then is from Central Newfoundland Waste Management, and this is, uh, their budget, the operation budget for two thousand twenty-one. On the first page, a couple of things that might be of interest to you and the community, I guess. It says the Central Newfoundland Waste Management is pleased to inform the residents of Central that there will be no increase in fees for service in two thousand twenty-one. The collection fees for the communities we collect will remain at six, eighty-three dollars per household per year. And disposal will remain at hundred thirty-six dollars per tonne, I guess, eighty-three. For residential waste collected in the mandatory clear garbage and blue, blue recycling bags. So that's for information purposes. Uh, yes, sir.
Could someone tend to, it's two garbage bag and recycling bags. Uh, in term of, you can just put it in the black bag, really, and all, and it's what happens, according to the drivers that are taking the wood into North Zama right now, they see it themselves. They said it's only landfill. Because it's eastern though, so.
Yeah, they're.
This one?
This one's not the bag.
Yeah, so in St. John's, you just. So different rules for a different reason.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah. That's it, sir?
Yeah, this is me, potentially land, don't even gotta be thinking about it, and you're only gonna get, uh, your land.
But you don't need to, they don't recycle them, they just pull them out.
No.
Well, part of the driver's going here, he just, he don't fall down the left, he doesn't worry.
Okay. Uh, it's, uh.
Oh, this is what I'm doing, well, you, you know, you can do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, we moved into, uh, a letter from Lowenham Academy, and this is in relation to scholarships and award presentations. And it says, uh, in game middle paragraph. Uh, our two thousand twenty scholarship and award presentation will be a virtual one. For each presentation, we will provide a certificate identifying both the recipient and the donor. If you have a logo or picture you'd like us to include, please email it to sherragordon@n f s e s d dot c a. A slideshow of recipients will be prepared and posted to our school webpage and our Facebook page. I'm not sure that this is a request for scholarship funds.
No.
But, but this is just for information.
This is if you want, when they do the scholarship night.
Yes.
If you want to send them the town, the Lowenham logo, it'll come on. Lowenham's recipient is this, and you'll see your logo, or the mayor's picture.
Oh, one, I'd suggest, I'd strongly suggest a logo.
Thank you.
Give it a may.
They, well, yes.
It's a regular.
It's a regular issue.
Good.
It's already been budgeted. Hopefully, they have to have a same budget. Yeah, they will, yeah.
Okay, the next item is the, uh, monthly mayor's council's, uh, policy report from the R C N T. So that again is for information purposes. A letter from Norwegian Health Foundation, we need a donation. This one, um.
We gave a hundred dollars last year.
Yes.
I will definitely.
I can accept that, same with that, yeah.
Okay, same as last year?
Yeah. One hundred dollars.
The motion is made for a hundred dollars. Was there a second there?
Yes.
Oh, you did.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was being gross and something up here. All in favor?
Everybody.
Thank you. The next item is a letter from Enner Gori, and it's relation to the K D M P lookout at the top of what they call, uh, Fry's Hill. To like to request that the lookout itself, a map was known as Fry's Hill in my childhood, renamed and known as Hayward's Lookout. This is where the cable TV hid and the equipment was located, pioneered, owned and operated by my father. Uh, for the seventies, two thousand and two. Uh, so they're asking, she's asking to have a, a sign coasted there and, uh, I certainly think it would be a, a wise thing or at least.
Sure, they pay for themselves.
That's an interesting concept, but if we think, we could ask them to do that.
No problem. We have that, will we?
I don't know where we stand on that, do we have a policy on? It's our, it's a kind of trail, so.
That's the other thing.
We'd have, we wouldn't want people putting up signs for girls, so we'd have to, uh.
But then there's John's Walkway and Bill's Bridge.
As I say, so that's why it probably would be necessary for us.
Spring trip.
So, you know.
Yeah, for sure.
What is the consensus that we would do it on behalf of the town? Okay, that's that.
Or, very, well, no.
Okay, that's a.
And the town will pay for it, right? There was a thing that was.
No.
Wait, now, let, let's, let's town manager have a word here.
We should probably, uh, consult with the Fry family, allocation prior to doing anything, see in terms of if we're able to name anything at that park. Uh, and with their agreement, as they're part, I think we should probably figure it. I, I don't know what's been done in the past with putting up signs, if we would pay for it, or if we would provide the design work and they then would have to pay for it to be done in the proper design. I think that's a conversation.
So let's have that conversation, and we can talk to, uh, Fry family, both as well.
Did you correct?
Details, yeah.
Yeah, I can go ahead and solve that, we'll be thinking more about it.
The next item is a letter from Doris Court and, uh, Elaine Harris. And this is, uh, called Little Libraries. And this is, uh, this is, uh, um, in relation to an item that was discussed in the last meeting. And I think the decision in the last meeting was that we would defer the replacing of the little library until, uh, after COVID and certainly not before spring. Now, the question here, of course, is to have it done post-pace, to have it done as soon as possible. Um, I'm not sure how, uh, everybody feels about that. Like I said, our decision was based on the fact that COVID is a situation on the go now. Of course, we don't want to, uh, have anything that would increase content. The library is closed, but you can pick up books by having them delivered to your vehicle. So there's no exchange of books or hands in that sense there.
I, uh, I was thinking that.
Yes.
Second, I had libraries today, so I called, and I was able to drop my library books out in front of the school, they got dropped boxes. I'm told that those books have to stay there for a certain period of time to ensure that they're.
There's no germ.
No germ, so I guess.
Hmm.
And then the librarian, I guess, probably tomorrow, when she goes in, that should pick up the books that were dropped off today. So this, this wouldn't be possible, of course, you would have no idea if the book was put in there five minutes ago or whatever, so.
Wait a minute, explain to them the reason.
Yeah.
Why we, that we want you to, next brain elite, to handle.
After COVID.
Or gonna have a vaccination, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, so without, we, we hang our original decision that we had.
Well, I don't know, but we write that, yes, of course, we write this part to the letter.
Okay, uh, the next item is, um, from Recreation Newfoundland, and this is the stimulus program, uh, for communities. And then you'll see on the page in front of you, it's called the provincial government accepting applications for a new COVID-ninety stimulus program for communities. It says you can make application for up to, or submissions up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, upgrading of existing walking trails, supporting accessibility, new families and building healthy communities, and engaging residents in the revitalization of their communities. So, um, this is town manager, did you want to, uh, take it from there?
Yeah, so I, I guess we just need to turn around this pretty quick. If we want to apply, which I would suggest we show it based on the fact that it's, um, fantastic to get this funding. Um, it has to be, our recreation director reached out to one of the program coordinators today, and they said, you know, because we had talked about some time ago, uh, a pump track for bikes, skate park, those types of things. However, the person she had spoke to today said pretty, pretty clearly that those things wouldn't be considered because they're not pre-existing. So you're not improving on a current project, that would be a new project, which wouldn't qualify under these, um, eligibility requirements. So, uh, she also mentioned, because we had some earlier discussions, maybe putting, uh, lighting can done in the park, maybe even the small loop. Uh, not only for locks in the summertime, but more particularly for storm shooting and cross-country skiing in the winter. So, um, when she mentioned that to the person, she said absolutely, that, that would be something that would qualify. Not to say we get the money, but it would be something that would be looked about favorably. So that's just, that's just one idea I would add there, but look for others around the table. Yeah, okay, did we discuss one time we put a trail up along the town road to the, to the.
Yeah.
You don't, the town, the net point for this?
No, because we don't have the license to occupy it. So even if they accepted it as an existing trail, we, we couldn't work on that now not to get it in in two weeks' time or three months' time. But maybe we give it to them, yeah.
Well, yeah, we just.
Yeah, yeah. The, the other thing included with the, was, the other thing included was the, uh, with the lights, I don't know, does any work that needs to be done on the trail? I was wondering, are there bridges and culverts and so on that need to be replaced around some of the older sections?
Yeah, well, our workers do maintain it every, every year, they would do some work around it, I don't know if it needs a, a big refresh as such, but, uh, we could quickly do an assessment of the trail and see what needs there.
Totally.
Yeah.
It dropped on fifty thousand.
I don't think that'll be a problem. Yeah.
So how does the council feel? Is there anything else that comes to mind? We've been meeting around the, the office or something. It probably so, yeah, maybe so.
No, what, sure, one of them's more to them.
We're trying to be up to the window, well, eventually.
Can we add ice to the trail or does that need to be named?
Maintain a, a existing trail, that's the problem. And for instance, one of the things we talked about as well was, you know, going across to Angler Road to the River Road and so on, that's that's the thing. But again, that's not, we don't have the license to occupy that either.
Could you upgrade the walking trails from Sunday School over to North Zama?
Absolutely.
I'll give you that.
You make them up there.
I'll give you that, they do. And it costs three years as well. From trails and things, they do.
So if there's no other suggestions, and I guess we haven't, we still to get it in, and, and whatever we decide is gonna be worked out, because obviously this has to go in as a proposal with costs and so on.
We have to have some work on the, both of us to be, to be the cause of it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it's so.
And it's solar loops.
Our, our record is already reached out, uh, to get some prices on leashes to wrap our heads around what we're dealing with. So that would be a decision to council whether you wanted to go with, uh, solar versus electric, right?
I'll make a motion that we do the lighting right now.
I'll say.
Probably before I over many, however far we need.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So the motion is made in second, was any further discussion? All in favor? Does everybody?
I'd suggest maybe before the next meeting rolls around, we'll have to have this, you know, substantially contrasted, we can all together a quick meeting to go over, discuss the ins and outs of.
I don't have a regular trail.
Yeah, Nordic ski trail. Yeah.
And it's very good.
Yeah, it actually, the medicine came in.
My, uh, I questioned my sister, and of course, Paul and Claire, Paul just sent me a picture of them, snowshoe on there. Yeah. And they've got just regular light poles and overhead lights, but it's, um, quite beautiful. They charge fifty dollars a season to snowshoe or cross-country ski. But it's beautiful, but it's, uh, you don't really notice the light poles and stuff, especially in the winter when the trees are close to the trail. So it's all laid with snow, and it's absolutely beautiful. I'm not so sure how tr, how light poles will hook up around, can, um, park, or so barren, but it's, it serves a purpose there. It's huge, quite a bit.
Let's go on to the other one.
Yeah, a lot of people have expressed interest in the Canada Park, I guess, which are.
We want to have it on the park, we need to work on it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, solar lights, like, pathway, you know.
Okay, um.
You have some ideas, yeah.
We'll certainly may have to come back before it's sent away, but if not, then we'll be, we've had that motion made in second and approved. The next item is a letter from Sheriff Rogers, or NP, uh, and again, it's related to the first one, on the restart, the safe restart program. And it's information where he says the federal government is contributing up to two billion to support municipalities in Canada. The COVID operating cost throughout the agreement. Municipality should, and La Cradore received twenty-seven million, and he's very pleased to say almost three million of that money was marked for Bonaventure and Trinity. So that's, uh, a note there, a letter from our NP, so this for information purposes. The next item is a letter from Make-A-Wish Carol Service Donation, and, uh, I believe in the last minutes, we gave a donation of a hundred dollars from Make-A-Wish. Now, this, the first one that you have here, there's two of them together, is a presentation presenting, it says, the twenty twenty annual Make-A-Wish Carol Service. And they're again asking for a donation, and this is, uh, from back, of course, paper with the information. And the next one, of course, is the town of Lowenham, uh, R C N P, doing a, a similar sort of thing, uh, here at the, at the R C N P station.
Last year.
That they did last year. So it's, uh, the R C N P wish trees, and again, they're asking for a donation. So I guess we have to make a decision, is it whether we're going to both or one?
I have a new last year.
We did the hundred dollars for the R C N P one.
Here, I'm moving your sandwich here.
Okay.
I'll say good.
Okay, will the secondary sponsor the local one for a hundred dollars? The R C N P. Go space. Uh, any further discussion? Yes.
I'll be. I have one, one item that I failed to mention. Sure, yeah.
We want to go on this one.
That and that.
Uh, all in favor? Does everybody? Yeah, Mr. Town Manager.
We seem keen to get out of here.
Yes.
There was one item I failed to mention, so just to remind everyone, we applied for three projects this year under M C W and I C I P. The fire hall was our number one priority. Uh, road upgrading and paving of Alexander and Eagle Landing was number two, and the replacement of Northwest Bridge was number three. The fire hall was applied for under M C W, which would generally be sixty forty, but because we have an M O U with, uh, Traytown, we are applying under seventy thirty. So that's seventy thirty for M C W. The road work and the bridge were applied for under the I C I P stream, which opens up funding of thirty-three, thirty-three and thirty-three and a third between the province heads and town. So that's why we applied for that one, because the cost share was better, and it's the same funding pot that we got this current broker. So, um, we were called today by the regional office and the financial person, Angela Fury, had asked a question. She said, you applied under M C W for the fire hall, but only I C I P for the other two. Did you wish to also apply for M C W cost share ratios for those two remaining projects, which are fifty fifty? So right now, we're doing thirty-three, thirty-three and thirty-three. If we hit that, that will be our cost shared. However, if we get turned down for that program, she's asking, do you want to be also considered under M C W at fifty fifty cost share? So just to let you know how that translates, the bridge currently at one-third would be three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. If we are approved under fifty fifty, that jumps all to five hundred and forty-seven thousand. The road work under one-third would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand, under fifty fifty would be over two hundred thousand. So I think when we made the initial decision to apply under I C I P was based on the more favorable cost share, and as we did last year. So I was just keeping the same, holding the same line, but I didn't know.
I thought that should evaluation was gone based on that.
I also worry if we applied to the other one, they say, well, let's, let's give it under fifty fifty as opposed to the thirty-three percent. No.
I know, no, all they do are going to change.
So consensus that we would leave it as we already done.
That was more than.
Yeah, because they put on some. Oh, they really, they only have that.
Yes, yes, this town, yes.
Okay, uh, so need a motion to accept the check register, please, which is at the end of your minutes. Moved by Counsel Lynch, second by Counsel Arnold, all in favor? No exceptions, so we need a motion to adjourn. Okay, Counsel Lynch, Counselor Deputy Mayor. Okay, thank you.